Okay, let's get, let's get started here. Welcome, everybody, to our April, what's today, April 13th Village Board Meeting. We have a very full agenda to get started about with the main thing on the agenda would be our budget for the 2021-22 fiscal year, which we will have public hearing and public comment on, and then we'll go into our regular business. So first off, what I'd like to do is always, well, first, let me just say, we do have a quorum, trustee Nunaker is out ilt this evening, and trustee Lewitt will be here, but he's going to be a little bit late, but we're going to get started as well. All right, so what I'd like to do is lead off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, let's go right into our public hearing for and public comment section on our budget for 2021-2022. I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing and public comment section. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vanessa. All right, so first off, we'll start off with a review, and I'm going to turn the microphone over to our CFO and Treasurer Karen McLaughlin to give a brief update on the budget.
Okay, thank you, and I'd first like to start off by thanking the board that worked very diligently on this. Budget meetings were held on March 2nd for the water and sewer, on March 4th for the fire and highway, March 11th for the police in general, March 29th for staffing, salaries, capital projects, equipment and vehicles, and on March 31st, the tentative budget was filed with the village clerk and also put on, on the website. On April 12th, last night, the total budget was reviewed, and today, the 13th, we will be holding the public hearing. The board has reviewed the entire budget line by line, and in the general fund, the appropriations totaled $2,585,622. Revenue, not counting, revenue is $829,493, leaving the tax levy, the amount to be raised in taxes, of $1,756,129. This multiplied by the village total assessment gives us a tax rate of $3.15 per thousand assessed value. I'll go through the general and then go back and get the water and sewer after that. This budget takes into consideration increasing efficiency and productivity with our staff while keeping costs in line. Salaries have been calculated with a 1.75% increase pending union negotiations. Revenue, estimated revenues were increased for the fire contract and building permits, and the New York State AIM has, it has been reinstated this year. That means that we didn't know we were going to get it last year, and that equals 14, around $14,000, so we were able to add that back into our revenues. Court fines and fees have been decreased due to reduced activity in those line items. On the expense side, in addition to salaries, estimated expenses were increased due to an increase in health insurance, an upgrade to the police pro program, road repair, paving, and the addition of a few small accounts for maintenance. The fire department has held the line on their annual budget in anticipation of the new truck purchase and increasing their transfer to their file, fire capital this current year, which is offset by that increase for the fire contract. In conclusion, the 21-22 budget has come below the New York State tax cap of 1.31% by $5,663. So that's the general fund. Moving on to the water fund, the water revenues were calculated with the use of $57,000 of the fund balance, which is close to $600,000, so they do have a healthy fund balance, as a full rate evaluation will be conducted in the coming year. Equipment replacement and upgrades are in this annual budget, as well as the first long-term debt payment to the New York State EFC for the water main replacement project. Sewer has held the line, but anticipates some major upgrades to be funded in the upcoming year, which will probably be a bond to be started in the 22-23 year. Water and sewer budgets will not require, require a rate increase at this time, so the water fund budget will be $1,022,312. The sewer fund budget will be $831,584.
Thank you, Karen. Again, I also like to thank the board and Karen for all of the work that we've put into the budget into the last month and a half or whatever, to present this to the community. So with that, I'm going to open up the public, which the public comment section is open. I do see some members of the public that are on. If you would like to comment, please turn your camera on so we can see you, announce yourself, identify, excuse me, identify yourself, and then state your question for the board or for the treasurer.
Do you mind if I don't turn my camera on?
Identify yourself.
Hi, it's Pat Evans.
Okay.
Hi, Pat Evans.
So my first question has to do with the comments made by Congressman Delgado in the last public meeting about funds that were going to be received by the town and the village. Now, I understand that in looking at this budget, you did not take that into consideration, but my question is, do you have any more information about that? When the funds, when the funds might be received, or the timing of that, or what you would do with the funds when, when they are received?
So Pat, let me start off, and anybody else can comment as well. We do not have a date on when the funds will be received. What we do know is that some information that we've received is, you know, the split between the town and the village looks to be, the split is going to be divided, is going to be calculated based on the population of the village, and the rate that we tend to believe see for that is $109 per person, which would be the village's share of that $860,000. We also know, that was announced earlier, that those funds can't be used to balance the budget, they can be used for, as an example that we're given, the, building the infrastructure for 5G or broadband. We could use them, they could also be used for water and sewer infrastructure development, but it has to be a project that was currently scheduled or budgeted or talked about and within, within our minutes. It can also, other sorts of that money can be used, for instance, if we had furloughed employees, essential employees during the pandemic, to be able to bring them back and put them back to full salary, which we did not do. We did not furlough anybody during our course of the pandemic. We did reduce people who were working because of social distancing and to eliminate the spread of the COVID virus, but we did it on a rotating weekly basis and spread people out. So like, for instance, the highway department has four, one person had every week off leaving the highway department at three for several months during going through that process. So there are some of the examples that we know we can use that money for going forward. We're hoping to get a lot more definition, because for instance, $109 just came out just recently, per person that we know we can use, can be dedicated towards those kind of projects.
Well, I'm still unclear about what those projects might be, but...
Yeah. As I mentioned, we have not identified those projects yet, because we are waiting on definition of first, we needed to know the amount, which we just got tentative knowledge of, and now we're, now we can start, the board can start having discussion about how we could possibly use those funds, but to date, the board has not had any discussions on use of those funds for improvements within the, the village of Rhinebeck. I will say that there is one other use that the built, that these funds can be used for. When it talks about, I'm trying to think of the exact words that they used, but it was basically issues relating to the COVID pandemic. So some of those things could be used for giving additional money to the village businesses to support businesses that were, could have been impacted by COVID during the process. So again, we need further clarification on how we can justify that, but that money is meant to, you know, bring back your municipality to whatever level you want. And so this, this will be subject to the board and board public discussions, but to date, we have not had those discussions.
Okay. And, and I mean, just roughly, there's about 2,500 people in the village?
Yeah, 2,700, you know, I would use a better number.
Oh, I mean, you're talking about close to 300,000 then? I mean, without, without, you know, 109 per person?
Correct, yeah, yeah. And that's, now, that's a tentative number.
I understand.
I don't have that locked in.
Okay. My, my next question has to do with a line item on the budget that is identified as contingency account, and it's account 1990.4. And I guess I'm trying to understand this item, because when it started out at the start of this fiscal year, the 2021, the balance in that contingency fund was about 16,000 or so. It's been going down, I guess, as amounts are allocated out of it, but the tentative budget that was just put forth showed that the budgeted amount for 2021 was like 31,500, and it's budgeted for 35,000 this year. So I'm trying to understand, that number seems to move around a lot, and I'm just trying to understand that.
Karen, would you like to answer that? Because I think you're best poised to say how we use that contingency fund.
Sure, so, and, and you'll see that later on in my budget amendments, that we, the contingency account cannot be spent directly out of, it can only be transferred to one of the other departments to be spent out of. And I think we had 30,000, I think, in one of the accounts last year, like the building or something, that was put in there that we moved into contingency because we weren't, didn't, weren't using it. This year, we normally try and keep it around that, 25 to 35,000. It's not allocated, it's probably the only place in the entire budget that's not allocated for anything in particular, other than to be there if, if something is needed that goes over budget. So that's what that account is used for.
But I understand that, but that was a new item that was just initiated in the 2021 budget year?
Oh, no, it's been, it's been in there.
Okay, it has zeros across the board is the reason I'm asking that. If you look at the tentative budget, there's zeros across the board.
Right, because it, because to use it, you need to do a budget amendment to take it out of there, so anytime we use it, it'll just show the balance that's in the account, but it won't show what's spent out of there, because when we move it out of there, we do a budget amendment to reduce that budget by that amount and increase, let's say, highway or, or police or fire or whatever department we're moving it to.
Okay.
So Karen, who found it to zero?
Sorry. Go ahead.
I, just to, for, for clarification, it's down at zero because all the funds from the contingency line were moved into other departments and spent?
Correct.
Okay.
So just probably ask Pat's follow-up question, but generally, it's, you know, 30, $35,000 a year. Why specifically was it around 60 for 2020 because of something that went, happened in the building line item?
Yes, something that was in there twice, so instead of keeping it in there, the board agreed to move it into contingency and use it as they needed it.
Okay.
Yeah, this was a vote, Lydia, that we made several months ago to move that money into contingency.
Okay.
Typically, I mean, in the past, our past budgets has really been, we've, it's been much lower, it's been around the $25,000 mark is what we've always been trying to maintain as a contingency. This year, you know, you know, in anticipation of whatever, you know, based on history, if we have the money, I think it's a wise thing to do to keep a little bit extra in reserve there for those type of expenses that we need to do budget transfers on.
Yeah, there's always unforeseeable expenses.
I, I think we also are anticipating this, the new fire truck. Yes, we are offsetting it with the fire contract increase, but having that little bit, because we don't exactly know what the interest rate's going to be when we start putting that long-term payment together, which will be in the next fiscal year. I think the contingency kind of allows us the stability to keep, like, the stability of, of the budget and the tax rate moving forward, so.
Well, and that, that brings up another question that I had, and I guess it has to do with the use of these capital accounts and some of the inter-fund transfers. Because, you know, I guess in, in listening to you all talk about some projects, like the South Parsonage Sidewalk tree project, it sounded to me like you were going to use that entire capital accounts for the parks and the sidewalks fund. And I guess I just under, I'm trying to understand the philosophy or the thinking on some of the decisions, because talking about the fire truck and talking about the capital accounts in a public meeting, when you were talking about the purchase, you said you were going to finance 100% of, of the fire truck purchase, and I'm just trying to understand, why wouldn't you use some of the funds that have kind of been put in that? You know, I've heard you refer to it as the savings account. Why wouldn't some of those funds be used instead of paying, based on the schedule that you had up on one of the prior budget meetings, $150,000 of interest over the course of the borrowing period?
Yeah, so Pat, let me, I can answer part of that question, and maybe others can do as well. You know, as we set those capital funds aside, you know, and we try to continue to increase that for future investments, when we looked at the fire company investments, we also have, are looking out into the future, and right now, we can look at the, the current rescue truck, which we could bond for and maintain a, you know, a reasonable cash flow to do that. We also were taking into account a future project, a future investment, which would be an ambulance for the fire company, and having that money in reserve will allow us to continue to build that, and what we're anticipating, you know, and what we discussed is a future ambulance.
Okay, that, that's helpful to understand. I don't think that that was, if, if, if it was disclosed or discussed earlier, then I missed it, but that, I think, makes sense.
And as regarding the South Parsonage Street sidewalks and, and tree project, we'll, we'll find out in June if we get that grant, but that, that project's not going to move forward unless we receive the GIGP grant.
Oh, right, but there were funds that were also needed, whether you used in-kind or you had to contribute. I was under the impression from the discussions that the amount contributed, not the in-kind, but the amount contributed would pretty much use up a good portion, if not all, of the sidewalk and park fund, capital project funds that are set aside at this point.
I don't have a minutes in front of me of what we said we would use there, but yes, we would, we noted that we did have money in those capital accounts if we did get that grant, that could be allocated to pay for some of the expenses needed for that project. I don't remember, Pat, if it was what portion of that it was. We could go back to the minutes and clarify that, but I don't have that in my focus.
But I mean...
But that's what, but that's what we would use that money for, and it was the same thing when we looked at the West Chestnut Street sidewalk, and we tried to get that through the MIG grants from the county. We looked at using that same fund to use towards offsetting that cost for the sidewalk development if we were approved for the West Chestnut Street. So that's how those funds get used, and we, we try to keep some fund balance there for those type of projects, because we never know when an opportunity may come about, you know, with a, with a grant opportunity that would be available.
Yeah, Pat, I just wanted to add also, a lot of these grants are either 80/20 or 50, they have matching funds that are required from the village, so this is money set aside that does not impact the annual operating budget by having these set aside for those specific purposes.
Okay. Okay.
And then we, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, Pat, but I just wanted to follow up. We add, you know, a small amount to each of those funds every year, which is included in this 2021 proposed budget. Yeah, exactly, okay. All right, sorry, Pat, go ahead.
No, that's okay. I don't see anybody else in the audience raising their hand, so do you mind if I keep going?
That's what public comment section is for, Pat.
Okay. My next question, again, trying to understand, there was $450,000 that was borrowed last year to repave the streets after the water distribution project. And again, in one of the meetings, I was under the impression that there were some amounts in that borrowed, 450,000 that was borrowed, that's unused, and may be, belong to the water district or department or something like that. Again, the reason I'm trying to understand this is because when that amount was borrowed, it was part of the water department, and now it's been, been moved to the general fund. Now, that might have just been a temporary thing, but again, I'm trying to understand what, you know, are there funds left?
I can answer that.
And is it going to stay in the general fund area?
So at this time, that 450 was added to the total, I mean, it was kept, accounted for separately. It's for highway because it was for repaving, it was for additional work that the water main project did not cover, and there is currently about $53,000 left in that account, although, as you'll hear in my report, we have some, a few engineer bills and a few bills still coming in. At the close of the project, we will use that to, I will bring that to the board, what, how they want to use those funds.
Okay, so...
I mean, they may, they may choose to pay down the debt with it.
But Pat, Pat, can I, can I jump in before you move on? I mean, when we, when we borrowed that money or bonded for that money, it was for the purpose of doing Mulberry Street, and Mulberry was not in the water project, but the board felt that at the time we were doing the work on Livingston, Chestnut and Platt, Mulberry was also a street that was severely impacted because of crossroads and so forth that were going on, that we wanted to take advantage of this opportunity to pave Mulberry. We also used it to fix drainage, you know, in addition to the, in addition to the paving, which is items that were not, as Karen mentioned, were not covered by the grant or the loan that we took out for the water improvement project. And that's why it was in the net, it was in the general, it, it, the payment for that is in the general fund, not in the water fund.
But it did sort of start in the water fund because it was all part of that, or did it ever, or, so it started in the water fund, and then as we realized how much of it was highway, we moved it to the general fund, and so now the two projects are fully separate?
Right, we actually set up a separate bank account for the water main project itself, so we kept two separate spreadsheets in the water main project, and then we, and one was for that 450 and items that pertain to, to paving and pertain to more to highway. I think there were some catch basins and, as Gary said, other drainage issues that didn't have to do with water that came out of that. So certainly, Pat, the board will determine, you know, whether they want to use that 53,000 for the same purpose as the 450 for, for roads, or if they want to pay down the debt on it.
But the, the reason they were in one account is, that was for our tracking purposes, right? I mean, it really facilitated us to be able to keep track of the joint funds, the combined funds that we had while we were working through this total project, which we added to the, which we increased to our scope of work to include Mulberry Street.
Correct. Well, the full paving was also, wasn't that in addition too?
The paving of, the paving, no, the, the, the paving of Livingston, Chestnut and Platt was covered by the water fund. There was money allocated in there for the resurfacing and repair of those roads, and we took that money to be able to do, use that to repay them because of the amount of construction that was done on them.
Okay, well, okay. But, but the comment that I heard at a prior meeting by one of the trustees that mentioned there was some amount of that 450,000 that really belonged to the water department, that is incorrect then, from what you're saying. That 53,000 that remains isn't allocated to the water department?
The board can decide what they want to do with that, $53,000. If we want to use it to work on paying down debt for the water fund, we can so choose to do that.
Okay, well, that's not what I'm getting, but it seemed like, it seemed like there was a comment made, anyway, go ahead, Karen.
I, I'm sorry, Pat, I just wanted to, to say, those funds are not in the general fund at this time, they're in a separate capital project bank account, and, and I don't know, this might be a better conversation to have when Brant gets back as, as to what the full board wants to use it for, and Rick.
Okay, and I'll, I'll just move on. I, Karen, you mentioned in your introduction about using one of the inter-fund transfers in order to keep everybody's water bill pretty much flat. I, I think that's what I basically understood.
Use, using fund balance, not, not an inter-fund transfer, but using current fund balance of the water fund.
So my question is, is this something that you anticipate continuing, or is this just something that you've decided to do this year?
Can I jump on, can I jump on that one? Can I jump on, can I jump on that one?
Sure.
Um, so Pat, during that whole conversation about the water, um, about the water budget, uh, the board came to the realization that the rates are not keeping up with where they need to be. And so Brant was going to start the process of public hearings and all of the rest of it um, to raise the rates to where they need to be. And so this was very much a stopgap. Um, so this is not going to be a permanent solution, obviously. Um, well, not obviously, but this is not going to be a permanent solution. Um, and i- i- it was designed to give Brant the time to be able to pull together the, the, the public comment period that is necessary in order to go through the process of raising rates.
Which ties into the fact that we're going, that we are anticipating some uh, capital improvements based on the engineering report from the water fund. Um, so we're looking at doing some, some more investments into improving our water treatment plant.
Right.
And all that ties out.
And that would entail probably raising water rates at some point in time to be more in line.
Pat, that's TBD. We have to do the study and that's what the board agreed that Brant was going to do was to do that study. And this was, as both Lydia and Karen mentioned, this is the stopgap to, uh, we can do the, to give us time to do that study.
Okay.
But TBD.
Okay. Okay. Um. I think uh, I'm gonna pass on my last question just because I feel like it's probably I don't know, it, it, it's a critical observation and I'm not sure that I want to say anything right now. I know you all put in a lot of time and you put in a lot of effort. But you know, talking about the wage increases and cost of living and last year, this year, forward, backward, all sorts of different ways. Um, you know, I, 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 I thought about a lot of different ways of saying this and there's no way to say it um, without being critical, but you know, I think to have some of the discussions that were had with not acknowledging that the board received a 10% increase in the current fiscal year. Um, I don't know, that, that just didn't seem right to me.
All right, Pat, I'm, Pat, I'm gonna jump on that one because I'm new. Um, so I feel like I can take the fire for this one. Um, but uh, a number of the employees last year uh, received, and now I'm going to find my chart so that I can actually be um, thoughtful about this. Um, or actually give you like real numbers on it. Um, where did I put this email? Um, so as part of last year, um, all right, now I'm not going to be able to find this email. Enraging. Um, a number, so management received raises and I'm gonna sort of use the Board of Trustees and the mayor as like blanket management. And then um, everyone on the, on, on, on staff also received more than their 2% that the union would require, um, that the union contract required because there was an effort, and this has been explained to me, there was an effort to right-size everybody's salaries given inflation, given all of the work, given sort of like what has happened over the last 10 years and how raises did not keep up with all of that. Um, I can tell you right now that some of their employees received 15% raises as part of that effort. Um, and also as part of that effort, the Board of Trustees and the mayor also received a raise. Um, I mentioned in an early budget workshop how um, uh, surprised, I think is the polite word. Um, I was to discover how much um, members of the Board of Trustees work versus how much they are paid. Um, and so this is something that I believe um, is, you know, a problem across all local governments in that um, they, local governments expect a lot of people to do a lot of work for free. And that is fine on certain committees and all of the rest of it. Um, but I am personally um, concerned that the fact that this village, you know, asks for and people are grateful to provide the amount of work required to be a member of the Board of Trustees or a mayor, or the mayor um, for the amount of money that we are paid, has done an excellent job of cutting out approximately 80% of the population from being able to do this job. Um, if I were a single mother, I wouldn't be able to do this job. Um, if I had a, you know, my former full-time job as a white collar litigator, I wouldn't be able to do this job. Um, and whether it's the time or the money, either way. And so I think that the village in the last year and a half has actually done a really good job of beginning the process to make sure that everyone at Village Hall is appropriately paid. And the fact that management is choosing not to take any kind of a raise this year, I think is um, an appalling example of how we've just decided that elected officials are not worth the time that they spend working on public, um, on their public service. And so I hear your concern, um, but I am telling you now, I think it is unfounded.
I, and by bringing it up, I did not mean to say that you all don't put in a significant amount of time and probably aren't paid appropriately. But you know, it was just in the, in the way the discussion was had, and I don't know about individuals with 15% increases. That's not part of what I'm able to hear. It was just in the, in the, in the context of 2% last year, one, one and a half, now it's 1.75 this year. Well, they got a lot last year, they should be happy with, anyway. It was just the context and I understand where you're coming from. And it wasn't meant in any way to say that you don't put in the time.
Oh, and I appreciate that. I mean, I, I know that everybody is aware of how much work we do. Um, but it, I, I, I think it's important to note that many of the employees got double-digit raises last year. They didn't just get 2%. Um, a lot of them went from $15 an hour to $22 an hour, which is, as I'm sure you can imagine, well more than 2%. Um, and so, you know, everyone was right-sized a bit last year. And so now the question is, and part of the conversation that we had last night, was now what to do moving forward. Um, we, you know, if we're only getting, if the village is only getting 1.3, 1.5% of increase, you know, of revenue possibilities, like, that's where we are. And so, I mean, obviously, all of this is going to tumble out given union negotiations, but you know, you heard me last night. I firmly believe that not pegging um, just cost of living raises, annual non-performance raises to um, I think it's very important to peg them to economic indicators. Otherwise, people either start lagging behind or they start, you know, earning too much. And I'm not saying that people shouldn't be paid fairly. Um, I'm, I'm actually saying exactly that, that people should be paid fairly. Um, and so I think just giving people 2% because it sounds good when it's not based on anything having to do with the economy is a slippery slope.
Mm-hmm. Okay, all right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all for me. Thanks. I, and I uh, will echo, thanks for the time. And I would also like to say to Martina, thank you for putting, uh, and Karen for putting some of the stuff up when I couldn't get on, and I don't know why I can't get on all the time, but I do appreciate them being put into the cloud. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other comments from the public in attendance? Hearing none, I'm gonna make a motion to close the public comment section of, for the Village of Rhinebeck Budget 21, 21, 22. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Okay. Any discussion on the public comment? I'm gonna ask for a vote to close. Can I, you know, based on the quorum, can I have a raise of hands and a saying of aye to close the public comment section?
Aye.
Okay. Now we're into the board in the public hearing. Um, you know, for us to now, uh, the public hearing has been voted on and open. If there's any other additional considerations or comments to be made about our proposed budget for 2021, 22 by the village board.
I think we've covered it.
Given that this is for the two of you, your first experience at going through the budget, right, in a detailed format, uh, which we choose to do, right? The normal process is not this. We choose to do it this way. Or I should say, I choose to do it this way. Uh, because typically, you know, a lot of municipalities do not work in a very open and public format, the way we do on our budget. The budget is prepared and then presented to the board and then the board is, you know, has given a, a select amount of time to review and make recommendations. But we choose a different process. And when applicable, I like that process because everybody is engaged, everybody learns a lot more about all the other intricacies of the running of the village, rather than just their own component. Um, you know, I'm really pleased this year from some of the strategic things that we have done. And strategically, I'm gonna call out uh, the work that trustee Vanessa Protosi is doing. Uh, for us to have an environmental line item, an environmental statements in, you know, dollars allocated to improve our position as an environmental community-minded area, I think is great. Um, so I, I want to thank Vanessa for bringing those light items forward and carrying the torch for us environmentally.
Sounds good.
And you're welcome. And since Lydia is here, I want to comment on Lydia because this has been a tough year to be thrown right into the mix. Um, to, to say, and not get it, not to get into any specific situations, but we've had to deal with uh, changing of personnel and react and react swiftly and then plan for what we should to be doing. So uh, trustee Lydia Slaybee, thank you for working through that, working through that process. Uh, Brant is not here, um, but I would like to thank Brant for his involvement in taking over both water and wastewater. Water is an area that we cannot bend on. I don't know if bend is the right word, but we need to protect our water. And we need to bring improvements to our water treatment plant, which is 50x year, whatever old, I forget the exact, but you know, it needs upgrade. The times are changing, you know, the, the rules and the regulations on how we regulate water and the quality of water is changing, and this board has stepped up to address them. And so that to me means a lot, you know, because we started this effort, you know, based on looking at sea level rise in 2015. Right? As a start. And then we, and then we increased building, improving our water infrastructure last year, which was, I'm gonna thank our CFO here especially for, we very seldom do we have such a small team that can handle a project of that magnitude when in other municipalities have tenfold the number of people to do that. So Karen, thank you, uh, because this has really been an effort of not only looking at last year's budget, but then how does it apply to this year? And having us accountable for all of our funds. Uh, trustee Lewitt, I wish he was here at the time. I was hoping he wasn't gonna be this late. But you know, all of this work about paving and the investment that we do in paving and how we strategically last year used funds that we could to get what we did done, what we did with paving, so that we could allocate more funds to do more paving this year was strategic. And we are really moving forward on rebuilding the infrastructure here in the Village of Rhinebeck, which includes our roads, which need work, right? And the fact that we are every year making an investment in that infrastructure, I thank trustee Lewitt for putting the effort and the work behind, really making that effort come for, come forth. So again, and since Martina's here, you know, she's been thrown into the mix, right in the middle of a pandemic. Um, she bounced through it all. It's a lot to grasp, a lot to learn. And I know you weren't involved with the budget, but you know, you facilitated us, Martina, so thank you. So again, that's me thanking you, the board and everybody here for job well done.
Thank you.
It's scary.
Okay, I would like to make a, make a motion to uh, accept the Village of Rhinebeck Budget for 2021, 22 as presented to the board. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, Vanessa. All right. Any discussion?
Um, could you just approve the water and sewer budget separately?
Good idea. Thank you. I will do that next. All right. So this is the general fund. Good idea to break up. I lumped it together and I would, okay, so this is on the general fund. We have a second, no discussion, all in favor of approving the general fund. Uh, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Water District Fund as presented to the village board for the 2021, 22. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
This is Vanessa Beecham. All right, any discussion? All right. Show of hands, all in favor by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Your names. I'd like to make a second motion to approve the sewer fund as presented to the village board for the 2021, 22 budget. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lydia. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye and a show of hands.
Aye.
Recorded, I think the hand is important. Thank you very much. Motion passed to accept the general fund, water fund and sewer fund for 2021, 22 budget. Thank you all. No round of applause? A lot of work. Okay, moving on. Next is public comment. Since we have the public comment, I'm opening up the floor to public comment from anybody who would like to make a comment in general.
Susanna, go ahead.
Hi, thanks. I had just a question about the roads. Um, I see there's green paint, spray painted on them. Are you paving or fixing those sections of road? Is that what that's about or is that just something uh, totally different? Because uh, Gary, as you know, our area is a little rough on the roads right now.
You think?
So I'm really hopeful that's what that green paint means, but uh,
Yeah, so, so Susanna, yes, that green paint is a survey that we're doing. We have in the budget currently, um, I'm drawing a mental blank and I had this number in my head, I think, is it $10,000 for pothole repair? Karen, uh, X amount, X amount. So anyways, and we have fund money yet this year available to spend as well. So we are currently lining up uh, and identifying where we need to do road patching uh, coming out of the winter. And that green paint is to identify those coming out of the winter. And that green paint is to identify those, the major areas that we need that are beyond our ability to patch. And we bring in a subcontractor to do.
Okay. So are you just patching? Are you actually going to kind of dig it up and repave sections?
No, they're, that's, that's, they're, they're going to be hot patched, Susanna. They're not digging up paving.
Okay.
When our, some, someday we will get to our side of the village and hopefully work on the roads that are in my need of it. But there are roads in greater need, believe it or not, than are, than the roads in, on the south side of town and that we're going to focus on for this coming year.
No, I'm, I'm sure there are. I just, you know, it's, it seems like the pavement is crumbling in our area.
Yep.
Like literally crumbling.
Susanna, I just want to comment. That's what happens when years go by when we don't make the investment. And so I, this is why I gave the comment to trustee Lewitt because we are on a yearly plan to improve our road infrastructure. And I don't know if you remember the comment, but if you use New York pave money and or CHIPS money to rebuild a road, you cannot touch that road to repave it in a full way for another 10 years. So we're on a plan to go through our 11 miles of road in the village and be in a position where then we can go back and do the maintenance and hopefully preserve our infrastructure.
Okay, thanks. I also wanted to say I am happy that the new website is so easy to use and find the link to the Microsoft team. So I think that was Vanessa. Thank you. It just makes finding things so much easier, at least for me so far.
Thank you so much for that comment. Made my day.
That's it. I have no other comments this time.
Anybody else want to comment?
Hi, it's Pat again, and this will be it for me. I'm sorry to come back on again, but there was one other thing I forgot to bring up. And it had to do with all of the discussion on electric vehicles. And one of the things that I guess Kathleen and I have noticed when we go by the police station is that the vehicles always seem to be running a lot of the time. And she, Kathleen went into and asked about that and it has something to do with their internal equipment that they can't turn off the car. If they turn off the car, then it takes a while for the equipment to boot up. And I guess I'm just wondering, as you look at purchasing new cars, which I think there is going to be a new one, is there a way to? Again, I'm not a mechanic, so I don't know, but is there a way to have a battery charge for whatever's needed to stay up so they can turn off the vehicle so they don't have to idle as much as they seem to? Again, just a question. I don't know.
Yeah, Pat, I know that in, we, we've been looking into other police departments that have been switching their vehicles to EVs. And you know, we're not there yet, but there are some departments that are, that are, you know, I'm thinking of one in Connecticut and I know Hastings on Hudson is pursuing this. And the, it's just, it's not, it's not quite there yet for us, but it's something that's on our radar, no pun intended. But, but yeah, it has to do with the, the equipment draining the, the batteries and so on. So.
Okay, again, just a thought. I, again.
Yeah, Pat, so I'm going to answer it a little bit different way. Think of our response time. Right? So when the car that is running, that's a car that's on duty. And that car needs to be able to respond instantaneously, given any situation that may arise. And so we can't afford to waste the time right now to, because the way these cars are manufactured, to be able to have that car start up and be fully functioning and ready to go to do respond. Our hopes that in the future, you know, as batteries become more proficient, that we could augment that process, I hope. Because I too am against the idling. I think we should limit idling of a lot of vehicles in a lot of places. You know, in the, in the village to control our, our greenhouse gas effect. But as Vanessa said, we're not there yet.
Okay.
I want to be able, I want, I want to emphasize the safety in terms of us to be able to respond.
Well, I wasn't suggesting that they should turn the car off and then disable all of the, you know, equipment that they need. I guess I was just wondering whether there was some workaround to that and it appears there's not.
And it's not that we're aware of. I'm not saying there's not, not that we're aware of.
Okay, just a, thank you. That's it.
Okay, I'm going to close the public comment section. Moving on. Lydia. Drum roll, outdoor dining. You're next on the agenda.
Quick, take out your notes. Um, all right, outdoor dining. The permit, okay. Well, to begin with, it has been a series of beautiful days and there are lots of people sitting at tables outdoors. I'm delighted to report. I participated in a couple of those moments of outdoor tables and it was wonderful. As we know, the tents are going up, all of the tents, just to remind folks who may still be listening, all of the tents require a tent permit in addition to an outdoor dining permit. All outdoor dining permits for 2021, the applications are due on Thursday. A reminder, went out to the restaurants yesterday or today for that. Along with that, Martina and I are helping to quarterback the state liquor authority permission for people serving alcohol on public spaces like sidewalks and streets. So those applications are also due on Thursday, just to make everybody's life easier. I filed the DOT permit application on Friday with the DOT. They said to give us at least, to give them at least two weeks. And so we are sitting awaiting word for two weeks. The county has been very helpful. I just want to give kudos to the county again for being great partners in helping to navigate this entire process. So as part of the DOT permitting process, we need barriers. We worked out between our village engineers drawing up a plan and what our highway department needs. We worked out that we need to purchase 10 of the plastic six-foot barriers. I received two quotes for that, one from Traffic Lane closures for $3,100, including freight. And one from Granger for 40, for nearly $4,200, including freight. So I would recommend that we go with Traffic Lane closures, a bid on that one. And that one, we, obviously we will not purchase these unless DOT approves the permit. But I would like to have permission to purchase those as soon as that happens. So should we do that right now?
Yes, let's, let's talk, let's do it as we go. So I'd like to make a motion and then we'll, and then we'll second and we'll have a discussion and then move forward.
Okay, great. So I'd like to make a motion to purchase 10 of the six-foot white plastic barriers that the highway department will then put into their regular rotation once the DOT permit is approved for $3,100 from Traffic Lane closures.
I second.
Thank you, Gary.
So my first question would be to Karen, just to make sure we have the funds available to make that expenditure. You're muted, but I see your head going up and down. So, okay.
Sorry, trying to not have the mic sound at one time. Yes, we, we have enough.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, okay.
And I, you know, Rick and I worked it out. We actually need 13 of these barriers for the plan. But we only need 10 more at the highway department. So that's why we're only buying 10. And given the fact that our outdoor partying is limited, limited this year, other than outdoor dining, we shouldn't need the three that we're borrowing from the highway for any other event, hopefully.
Yeah. And I'd also like to make note that, you know, we've always looked at increasing our inventory of these barriers. We knew that the initial ones we purchased were not enough. So this is justification to purchase more because we do need them. We will get back to normalcy where we, we're going to have other events like porch fest, et cetera. So we're going to need these kinds of barriers. So they have a lot of purpose in life going forward. All right. So we had a motion, second, any other discussion? All in favor of purchasing 10 additional water filled barriers? Say aye and raise your hand. So moved. Okay, moving on.
So the next set of barriers that we need are 14 of the 20-foot concrete ones. These are usually thousands of dollars a pop. The county worked out a deal for us where basically we would purchase them for $100 each. And then the county would move them for us for free. They would place them for free. They would pick them up for free. And then the county as payment for doing all of this moving and moving them around would then keep them afterwards, which is fine because we don't have the resources to move them around. So there's very little point in us owning 20-foot concrete barriers. We had a hiccup this morning when we found out that the people that we are buying them from require their employees to load them onto the county trucks. So what we thought was a $1,400 expense just turned into a $1,400 expense plus $1,200 to, yeah, that was my reaction, to move them onto the county's trucks. So Gary worked out a deal with the county where we could do the 1,200 now and then do the $1,400 in the new fiscal year. But that happened. I am also, and for, I didn't have time to do it today, but I am reaching out to a few different people who have expressed interest in perhaps helping to offset some of the expenses that the village is incurring because of outdoor dining. So I need to make a few phone calls there. I am not, not doing those. I'm just not doing those today. And so I'm, I'm hoping to somehow come up with the funds to cover for this. But in the meantime, here we are with a 1,200 plus $1,400 expense. So I'd like to make a motion to to spend $1,200 to get these, to get these barriers up here and to spend an additional $1,400 to keep them for the summer with all of the county's help in moving them.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions about this? Right? This is, as Lydia pointed out, this is unexpected. We were not expecting the manufacturer of the barriers to have this issue. We thought the county was going to pick them up. And so it is a hiccup as described. But I don't think it's something we can avoid doing. And by deferring the 1,400 to sometime in the future during the summer when we're in the process, gives us time to really work on that structure and work on a, you know, a contract, a procurement, purchasing agreement with the county. And that's really what we need to do next, work on that. And we'll work on that piece to do that. And, and then when that, we'll get to 1,400, hopefully. Any other discussion?
And these concrete barriers, they could be painted or have some kind of murals on them? Is that right?
We have that, that, we got a lot of public comment going both ways on that question. And so we have not, there, at the moment, painting the barriers not, is not allowed on the outdoor dining permits. And if we wanted to go through a process where we opened that up, I think we would need to have a public hearing or at the very least, public comment on it. Because some of our village residents felt very strongly that they should remain blandly neutral.
I see.
And I would like to comment that, you know, this was, this is not new. We discussed this last year as well. And the problem is if the county ends up owning these, the county cannot use painted barriers.
Oh, okay.
Right.
Okay, care, sorry.
We can chalk them as much as we want or as often as we want.
Right.
But since these, it's in anticipation that the procurement agreement is going to go back, that these will be returned to the county. It would probably be, would not be looked on wisely to paint them.
I see. Okay.
Yeah. Unfortunately.
Okay.
All right. So can we have a vote on that?
We have a first and a second. I'd like to see a raise of hands and by saying aye, approving the expenditure as so noted for the $1,200 and the future procurement policy of $1,400 to be worked on and for the next fiscal year. Showing aye. Okay.
All right. So.
Let's, let's do it.
Let's, I know, let's keep it going. So I have also just today ordered signs, updated mask zone signs that remind folks to keep wearing their masks in certain areas, even if they have been vaccinated for COVID-19. That has been a problem that Officer Dunn identified and the restaurants have been having a hard time with as well. So another sort of other sign questions that came up in the public comment around outdoor dining. One, there were a few people wondering if we could install some signs in the same way that we have, you know, the farmer's market, kind of farmer's market here on Sunday after, Sunday mornings, pointing people towards our various parks. You know, we have the Thompson Mazzarella Park. We have the American Legion Park, Lions, all the rest of it. That is a question that I do not know the answer to. And then there was also a question on whether it would be helpful for the public at large to have some signs provided by us on what the current CDC guidance is. I spent some time going through the CDC website and trying to see if they had ready-made sort of things. And it seems like the information changes so quickly that having a sign that says, this is what the CDC says, seems like a waste of money, honestly. And so I, but I don't know if, like, I can keep thinking on it. One idea was to have sort of a, you know, one of those real estate plastic boxes of just, you know, current CDC guidance printed out on eight and a half by 11 pieces of paper that people can like pick up. But then I just foresee, you know, all of these flyers lying around on Market Street. And so I, I don't know if that's fully necessary to, to, to sort of publicly educate folks on what the CDC is saying about COVID. But that was, that was an additional question that was asked. This is all part of the sign, part of this conversation. I have no motion. This is more just an opportunity for discussion.
Yeah. Lydia, I would like to defer the discussion on additional signs to future debate. Only from the standpoint that signs, you know, there's a lot of people that would comment on signs and I think we need to have a more broader discussion on where those signs would be.
Yeah.
Because then, you know, because in the past, we've ignored putting signs up to point to Garden Street shops that have always been requested. You know, so all of these issues and then before long, you know, what sign do you have and how do you have it? Where do you put it? And all that needs, I think needs broader discussion, my opinion.
Okay. Yeah, that's fair. So then the final points that I would like to discuss, and we've had some emails about this. And I think it is probably, we should have Brant and Rick here for it, but the bicycle question. The Village of Rhinebeck has no law limiting bicycles from being ridden on sidewalks. In fact, we have no law referencing bicycles at all. We have a whole law banning skateboards, but nothing with bicycles. So the, the reason why this was raised is So um, the, the reason why this was raised is um, and, and this came up during outdoor dining, but it is a general problem in our um, busier areas. Is you have a small child on riding his bicycle next to a mother with a stroller and a dog. And someone is walking in the other direction, somebody else is coming out of a restaurant or a store and like chaos ensues, right? So um, creating at the very least, the idea of, 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 of um, banning people from riding their si, their bicycles on sidewalks, at least in the um, sort of central business-y area to be defined. Um, but you know, we all generally know what that would look like. Um, obviously this would be a new law. We need to have a public hearing on it and all the rest of it. Um, how do we go about beginning that process? Um, do we need a draft law and then announce it and then have a public hearing 10 days later and, okay?
That's exactly correct. We need to, we need to draft a law and then get it out to the public and then hold a public hearing and public comment section on it.
Uh, what does the lawyer look at it?
Yeah, that, when he would help us draft the law.
Okay.
Just to, to save a little bit of time and money, uh, Lydia, you could also look on our e-code or just go into sample legislation and so you don't reinvent the wheel and maybe there's.
Yeah, no, Ithaca actually has a nice law for it. Um, that, you know, that has like a blanket ban for adults on bicycles on sidewalks. And then, you know, ju, 10, 10-year-old and, and, and 10-year-old and younger are allowed to be on bi, on side, on bicycles, on sidewalks, except for in various areas. Um, so we can, I'll, I'll, I'll draft, um, I'll, I'll draft some ideas. We can talk about them as a board and then whatever we come up with. I think um, Martina and I can work on and then send out at least 10 days in advance of our next um, Board of Trustees meeting. So. Does that sound good?
Yeah.
Okay, great. And that is all I have on outdoor dining.
Thank you.
So, so Lydia, everybody's asked, Lydia, everybody's asking, when are the barriers coming?
Right, I requested them. I mean, I asked for them to come in um, two weeks from Friday. So April 23rd. Um, I don't know if uh, that will, I don't know if the DOT will, will play ball with that. Um, I'm, I was going to actually call the DOT tomorrow to find out where they were on this because I'd like to at least purchase the barriers before the DOT, you know, officially approves the permit. Um, but I don't know if I'm going to be able to do that. So the goal, I, I requested it for the 23rd, frankly, with the goal of having the barriers in place by the first weekend in May. Um, that was my goal.
Cool.
Yeah.
Pent-up demand?
Yeah, oh yeah, oh yeah. A lot of pent-up demand.
Okay. Thank you, Lydia. I'm going to move on to you if it's a time. Andrea, Andrea, I believe you're, are you still with us to talk about the farmer's market update?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. And uh, I'm not sure if you received the information that we had sent out a bit in advance, which has now of course changed a little bit concerning the new signs that we're going to have put up this week. Um, but pretty much everything else will be uh, running the same as last year. Uh, so same layout, uh, same priority on everyone wearing a mask at all times, uh, no eating or drinking within the market, social distancing, monitoring the capacity. Uh, New York State Department of Agriculture and Markets really didn't change much at all for us. Um, so we're just going to be continuing with the same protocols as last year and everything's pretty much going to just focus on essential shopping and get in, get out and uh, hopefully enjoy your purchases and food somewhere in the area at a park.
So Andrea, there was a question, somebody that asked me, is the farmer's market going to expand more on the east side?
Uh, no different than last year.
Right.
So the entrance would be exactly the same. Um, and I think what we're going to try to do this year is if we do have any line to enter, which we're hoping is going to be um, a little more faster paced this year because of the way the vendors can serve people now. Actually, customers can touch the produce, so that should move people through quickly.
Good.
We were thinking of keeping like a holding area more so within the zone of the market. So people aren't lined up in front of the parking spaces there. So we'll still be using the same exact entrance.
Right, okay. And since we are purch, since you are purchasing all of the no parking signs and we are purchasing uh, the post and we'll install those no parking signs, there is no need for sawhorses, is that correct?
Exactly, right.
Okay. Uh, so everybody is clear that we won't be, we will still have our sawhorses available if we need them um, this year.
Right, exactly. And those signs should be ready um, hopefully by Friday or Monday, which I'm coordinating with Martina. So we'll get them up right away. And I believe the police sergeant Dunn was in on our email chain is, you know, in the loop for that too. So everybody is on the same page that those will be individually posted, single spaces. So no questions about Sunday morning if there's any cars left over in the lot.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, that's intent. Very good. So is there anything you need from us to vote on or approve?
Um, I believe we are all set. Um, so same layout, same plan, pretty much the same protocols and we'll be starting May 2nd.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Andrea, and thank you for attending this evening.
Sure, you're welcome.
Looking forward to another great farmer's market and, and sticky buns.
Yes. They'll be back.
Sorry, I love sticky buns.
They're so good.
Alright, okay, moving on. Contract for compost feasibility study.
Yes, it's me, this is me. So um, uh, as everybody knows, the village has been interested in pursuing uh, some sort of composting program for many years. Um, and as part of our Climate Smart Communities program, this is an action um, to uh, look into what they call organics management. And we uh, so we were lucky enough to receive a proposal from the Rochester Institute of Technology. They have a department called the Pollution Prevention Institute. And um, so they offer these services to municipalities where they will come and work with you to develop the feasibility study. Basically, what this uh, service will do is give us um, some more information as to what our options are uh, for composting for the village, what makes the most sense for us. Um, and um, I'm very happy to say that they are providing it free of charge. So it's uh, worth $22,000. Um, and it'll be a mu, multi-month project. So I would like to make a motion that we approve the agreement with uh, the Pollution Prevention Institute for the composting feasibility study.
Any just, any other discussion? This is a great deal.
Yeah.
That's my comment, okay?
Yeah, well done, Vanessa.
Yep. Okay, uh, having a motion made and seconded, I'd like to call for a vote by the village board to approve the Rochester Institute Technology, New York State Pollution Prevention Research Agreement. By show of hands, is I saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Excellent.
Thank you.
Next, you're still on, I think you're, you're still on.
Okay, my next item here. Um, I'm bringing forward a resolution that um, that we join with the town of Ryanbeck in a project called the Natural Resources Inventory. Similarly, I'm also very pleased to say we're getting the professional services free of charge. Um, which seems to be my, my kind of way of doing business here uh, with the environmental projects. Um, the Hudson River Estuary Program, which is kind of a subsidiary of the DEC, um, they provide these services to municipalities to help you map all of your habitats, um, special soils, wetlands, and all of your natural resources. Um, and uh, it's basically a collection of very detailed GIS maps, um, along with a narrative report explaining the utility of those maps and what they mean for a community. So why it's important for us to join in with the town is uh, you know, natural habitats and uh, and environmental resources don't always naturally flow along the borders of municipalities. So it's exciting that we will be joining together with the town in this project. Um, Carly Fracaroli, who is on our Climate Smart Committee, she will be our, our village um, person on this, on this project. Um, I also, thanks to Lydia, uh, reached out to the village planning and zoning boards. And uh, Christopher Taverner has stepped up. Um, and I'd like to accept his offer to be kind of the point person who's very familiar with village zoning and planning to be on this committee. So um, this will be about a year-long process. Um, and our uh, our other, our other approach is really to look at this from the point of view of not just creating another big report, but creating some maps that will be um, interesting and useful for uh, for the general public, for the school district. We have um, Scout Pronto from the high school who's very interested in, in uh, representing kind of the high schooler point of view with this project as well. So I'd like to make a motion that we pass the resolution to um, join the town in this, this NRI project.
I second that.
Any discussion?
Yeah, any discussion?
No, I'm, I just read it. Yeah, I mean, this makes a lot, I mean, obviously we've been talking about this for a while. I think this makes a great deal of sense. And I'm glad that um, Chris stepped up to help.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I, I, I think that, you know, someone made the point that um, obviously the town has more territory uh, as it were, to i, in regards to this project. But with the village, we do have the Landsman Kill and Crystal Lake and we have um, our, our, you know, our urban forest here. And um, we as humans are part of the ecosystem here in the village. Um, so I think it'll be a, a really fascinating project to look at the relationship as well um, of the village with the town.
So Vanessa, do we get points for this accord?
This is, this is biggie.
I know, I want to bring that out.
Yeah. This, this plays into our Climate Smart Communities program and our pursuit of silver certification.
Okay, okay. All in favor, say aye and show of hands?
Aye.
Aye, approved, very good. Thank, thank you, Vanessa.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm on the schedule next. Um, I want to talk about the, um, it's called the DCCIT Shared Service Agreement with the county. It's a rather large document that was on the, based on the cloud. It's a 25-page document. Um, and I want to paraphrase this because this is a ongoing effort with the county as part of our shared services. Where, whereas in order to continue to establish program partnership, the contract with the program that have now been transferred to etcetera. This is basically the Duchess County Crisis Intervention Team, Duchess C C I T, and the Behavioral Evaluation and Assessment Team in the county. And this is our support to work with them on bringing forward a better response. There's for those people who are suffering from either crisis or a mental health and participate in the training program that the county puts on with, with our police. So it's a big deal. It's part of something that we've agreed to work with them in, you know, in before, but now the county has really put some organization behind it, uh, which they've identified in this agreement and as well as funding it, which they've identified in this agreement to increase the awareness. So there's 10 bullet points on the last page. I'm not going to read them all, but you know, some of the important ones to me are emphasize treatment rather than incarceration of people suffering from mental illness, right? Number two, decrease the proportion of people suffering from mental illness and substance use disorders and having special needs that are now currently placed in the Duchess County Jail. Uh, number seven on this is, and these are not in order priority, but increase law enforcement's knowledge about mental illness, substance use disorders and special needs, and increase skills and interactions with people suffering from or experience of having one or more of these conditions and provide training to selected law enforcement officers. So for those who were listening and going along where we were talking police form, this is one of those big things. Where, you know, we're, by putting the emphasis on the county to pull this forward, to do more for um, those people in crisis or of mental abuse is going to be good and we will participate in the training. So I'd like to, there's every police, every municipality that has a police force has been given this um, to review. Um, I've reviewed it with Sergeant Dunn. We have no objection. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution uh, for the agreement with Duchess County um, to work with the Duchess C C I T and, and the Behavioral Evaluation Assessment Team uh, going forward for the coming year. Do I have a second?
I'll second that. Um, okay.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question. Um, I'm just, the, the general liability insurance, I'm assuming that our police force has a general liability insurance plan.
We do, um, but that's a good question because this is also covered in detail in this document where the liability insurance, and I don't remember what page it's on, one of the 25, but um, here it is, each organization shall carry a general liability, these are the organizations, not us, the village.
Oh, got it, okay.
Each organization should carry general liability insurance to the sum of a million dollars with specific endorsements covering the activities of those employees assigned to the DCCIT and/or beat, you know, and work a compensation of self-insured coverage, etcetera, etcetera, etcetera.
Okay, so you know, our, our officers would be covered?
Yes.
The question here is, do we have to buy additional insurance? Okay.
Answer is no, right?
Okay.
And, and just to everybody where this is, the term of this agreement is, you know, was supposed to be of January 1st, 2021, but till they got funding. So it's retroactive to January 1st and expires on December 31st of this year, right? And the agreement may be extended in writing for additional one year, which will not, and was for the same period and shall not exceed a total of five years from the original agreement.
Okay.
So every year we will review and learn to see what we've benefited or not benefited from this and from the county being able to participate.
Okay.
Um, is this what Brennan, Brennan Kearney would come to the, come to us and say, hey, there really needs to be actually more done with this program?
Well, it is, it is not directly related to the effort Brennan was going to report at. Brennan was going to report back on to us the Mobile Crisis Intervention Team, which is not part of this, right? So there is a Mobile Crisis Intervention Team, which we've been discussing that says we need more of that to be able to respond and build up. So the, I know the county is working on that, but I don't know the details, Vanessa, of the Mobile Crisis Intervention Team.
Okay.
And that goes to support the Duchess County Stabilization Center, which also needs additional staffing, which the county legislation is looking at doing all of that within the county level, outside of the scope of us.
Okay. It's kind of amazing actually, the timing of this, because I, I literally on my afternoon run, I drove, I, I ran by two state troopers and a local village of Ryanbeck cop dealing with a mental, very clearly a mental health issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we know we, this is something that we need to respond with and we need to do and we need to have the support and the training to be able to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, having a first and a second, uh, I made a motion to accept all, all in favor, show of hands and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Another one to sign. Alright, I'm still on the list, uh, Memorializing the Shoken Reservoir. Um, for those, I think who have been following the press, I think you're all aware of what the current DEC and New York State uh, D E P is doing to uh, with the releases out of the Lower Shoken into the Sopas Creek, which is funneling into the Hudson River. And as it funnels down the Hudson River, there's an increased turbidity, which which is funneling into the Hudson River, and as it funnels down that Hudson River, there's an increased turbidity, which is made up of sediment that is impacting all of those municipalities, which I'm going to name the seven, right, who are participating in the Hudson Seven, and their five water treatment plants with increased costs of retract, removing that sediment from the filtration process as that water flows through our water treatment plant, right? All of the municipalities that are affected are, we drew, we worked together to draft this resolution to give to the state, uh, to voice our opinion that we should not be used as their process for providing filtration. They have a filtration process um, that they had currently used. The Shoken Reservoir, if everybody knows, is designed to be part of the filtration process. There's an upper sopas, a, a supper Shoken and a lower Shoken, so that sediment is somewhat released and set, and stabilizes before it gets released into their system. Um, but as it is, it goes down through their process and gets treated at another reservoir, which is now at capacity. And what they need to do is they need to take care of their reservoir, which is further downstream for that sediment, and not release it into the sediment into the Aesopus, which is not only impacting our water, but it's impacting the, the fish and, and the habitat and causing additional erosion on the Aesopus Creek. So that's in a, in a very high-level nutshell. We, I would like to make a motion that we memorialize this resolution as putting the New York State D E P, as they do their releases to the Lower Aesopus Creek, on notice that we object to this process of what they're doing. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion.
Does D E P, just like, does D E P know what it's doing? I mean, like, has anybody said anything to them?
Yeah.
Is this like a conversation?
The public comment section has, is started back in March, and there has been a lot of public comment. Uh, Hudson Seven has participated very actively in the public comment section. Uh, we are also forming a full committee to go after this in earnest, uh, with what is being done for uh, the process of what the D E P is doing. They are well aware. And they know, they're well aware that this is uh, not in their per, plans to be able, should be able, allowed to be, to do, right?
Yeah, I mean, is this like something that's been in general?
Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was just saying, like, is this something like Letitia James would be interested in? I mean, like, this, this seems like the D E P is, is, is violating its own laws.
Yeah, Sinic Hudson is engaged, you know, Hudson Seven is engaged, you know, um, all the, all the communities that live along the Aesopus are engaged, Kingston's engaged, and all of us, you know, that I mentioned Hudson Seven, so we're sizable force, and the fact that the Hudson Seven reckon, you know, supports 106,000 people, right? It, we're, we're, we are carrying a very strong voice that we are sending back to them uh, to reduce this process. I mean, we've been tracking the turbidity. The town of Poughkeepsie Water Treatment Plant has ability to track turbidity levels, and they are all 10 times greater than what they ever have been in the past.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, no, it's not, it's not cool.
Oh.
So, I have a first, we have a second discussion. I'd like to have a show of hands and by saying aye to support the resolution uh, on the Shoken Reservoir. Aye.
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 Very good. This will go forward with everybody else's in the stack and carry, and will carry a lot of weight. Okay, water treatment ladder replacement. Brand is not here. I am going to move forward with this for you. Um, I don't know if everybody remembers, we did, we've done now two videotapes of our reservoir up on Haly Hill, and one of the things that's been identified since the beginning is the replace of the interior ladder, which allows, if we have, it allows our divers to go down and do the inspection, but also if there's ever any need for repair or maintenance or whatever, this is the accessway interior to our reservoir up on Haly Hill. So I do not know the qualification of all of the quotes because um, let me just see if Brand sent me another text, because I asked, hang on one second. Uh, he said, we have been trying to get this bid in for a long time, um, so they've been working, trying to get multiple bids, but they currently have the bid from Underwater Solutions, Inc. for $12,490, $12,449, which includes a stainless steel 20-foot access ladder and 24-inch brackets installed price for $12,449. I'd like to make a motion to approve um, the quote from Underwater Solutions for installation of that ladder in our, in our, in our reservoir on Haly. Do I have a second?
Okay.
All right, any discussion needed? Questions?
It's like Karen, can, can, does the water department have the money for this? I'm assuming yes.
You're muted, Karen. You're still muted, Karen.
I'm glad you didn't hear that one. So I do believe that, that they do will look at the annual budget, and then if not, we'll um, I'll talk to Brand to see if he wants to use the capital water account, but between the two, they definitely do.
Okay.
Right, and this bid is good for 60 days. Yeah, okay. Um, a show of hands and by saying aye to approve. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving forward. Special request, Blue Stem photo shoot. I'm, I'm going to apologize, I haven't had a chance to read this one, but I will read it now to everybody. This is, it's a photo shoot, I got that part. There's not a lot of information on here. A number of vehicles requested as of now, they will have a production RV, a 36-foot RV, and three vehicles um, identified to do the photo shoot. Uh, they are out of 220 Hickory Street, Warren, Pennsylvania, and the photo shoot is one and a half days, commencing on 5/18 to 5/20. Uh, exact dates will may, may change. Uh, request locations for special requests, sidewalks, downtown ride, you know, et cetera, no special requests. Where are they doing the shoot at, though?
I think they're just roaming around the, the lovely streets of the Rhinebeck Village. That was my impression. Lydia, you're muted.
For, do, does it say for what purpose anywhere?
That's what I'm trying to find. Clear on if this is a brand, is it a clothing brand, or is it just, you know, set for doing like stock photography? What, what's the purpose of the photos?
I'd like to know more about the purpose before I say yes to this.
Martina, are you aware of anything?
Yes, give me one second.
Blue Stem Brands headquartered in suburban Minneapolis is a parent to six dynamic e-commerce retail brands. Apple Seeds, Finger Hut, Drapers and Damons, Blair, Guddington, and Habland. I don't, that doesn't help me much. Um.
I'm trying to find it in my email.
And the question is, do they need any police support?
It doesn't seem like it.
For blocking traffic, whatever. Oh, it says requested locations for special requests. There are sidewalks in downtown Rhinebeck, no road or sidewalk blockage is required. All handle equipment as they walk throughout town. Vanessa, you're absolutely correct. So if they're going to walk around town to a video shoot.
Lydia, when you Google them, could you tell, is it like a clothing brand or something, or?
Uh, Blue Stem Brands is the parent company to...
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, do you have more information? I'm, I'm just Googling.
The person submitted the application is a producer for Blue Stem Brands, and they want to return to Rhinebeck for another catalog shoot for one of their brands, Blair.
Blair?
Catalog.
Learn more about Blair.
They said they'll be staying at the Duchess and shooting there as well.
La di da.
In town for two days, but they haven't quite narrowed down which days they'd like to, and it may be weather-dependent.
Blair looks like a, like a, just like a women's clothing.
Yes.
Women and men. Women, why? All right.
So it looks like a clothing thing. It looks like, I mean, in the past, we've charged us if they, we've charged people do this if they require support, but apparently they're not requiring any support, so I, I don't, it's up to the board, you know, and we can charge if we would like for people to take advantage of our wonderful village, but we don't have to.
I mean, I, I think unless like their production RV and the three vehicles are, you know, taking up space, but like, I don't know, if they're just in the municipal parking lot, I...
Yeah, so I, I, that brings up a good point. I don't think they should be allowed to park on East Market Street and block parking.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
I think that's the thing with, you know, I, I've heard tales of woe from places like Cold Spring that just become like film shoot central, you know, um, and they're just constantly blocking parking and blocking off streets to the locals because they have big film shoots going on and, um, but this doesn't sound, this sounds pretty like they're just going out.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I think, I think if we can, I, I'd be okay with this if we, if we tell them that they can't use the street parking downtown, they have to be in one of the lots, or they have to be a little off, off the beaten path um, for their parking, but otherwise, sure.
Okay, I agree. Anything else? All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the photo shoot by Blue Stem Brands slash Blair uh, for 5/18 to the 20, uh, with the condition that they don't use Main Street parking. Okay, all in favor, show a hand and say aye.
Aye.
Oh, wait, do I have a second? Sorry.
Second.
Yep, all in favor, show a hand and say aye.
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 Approved, okay. Next.
Minutes approval.
Minutes approval. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for 3/9/21, 3/23/21, 3/29/21, and 4/6/21.
Not 4/6, I didn't submit those ones.
Oh, retract. I'd like to amend to say 3/9/21, 3/23/21, and 3/29/21, minutes approval. Do I, do I have a second?
I have not had a chance to read these.
I haven't either.
So then we need to, then we should abstain, okay? We're going to take, Martina, great job of getting them ready, but sorry.
Fine.
Okay.
At least you finished them.
Almost.
Now you can add the other one. And this one. All right, so we will table that to the next meeting, okay? There is a requirement that we get them out in a certain amount of time, but what we will do is we'll get them out in draft form pending approval, okay? Uh, because we do need to publish the minutes.
Um, Karen, probably also, we could probably also do this just by email vote, yeah?
That's a thought. We can do that, might do a proxy, you know, by, by email when they're ready.
Okay, I'll email you guys all tomorrow with 4/6.
All right, so some late night, some late night reading, um, please. To review the minutes. Karen, Treasures Report.
Okay, um, let's see, the Treasures Report is for the period ending March 31st. The general fund ended the month with $639,775.47. This is um, much higher than normal because the New York Power Authority inadvertently deposited $371,000, which just yesterday they have taken back, so.
Darn it.
I know. So um, so that will go back to its, to its normal average usage. The water fund ended the month with $392,222.12. The sewer fund ended the month with $625,018.56. The um, New York class accounts are still accruing a small amount of interest, but they are accruing a little bit, so. Um, the, let's see. The vouchers presented for payment, including prepaid's in the general fund, total $71,812.53. In the water fund, total $37,143.96. In the sewer fund, total $35,008.2498. In the water main project, I'm going to break these out, the prepaid, the $20,773.84 is interest, um, interest payment still for the E F C portion that's being, that's being closed out and tr, and converted to long-term debt. The um, $769.22 is from tie-in bond, and that's just a lingering engineer bill from that project. In the escrow account, we had one bill in the amount of $750. So I request an authorization to um, pay these vouchers as presented.
I'll make a motion to accept the vouchers as presented by the treasurer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye and show of hands?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Oh, okay, an operating statement um, has been provided. It's in the cloud for revenue and expenditures through April 13th, 2021. Water and wastewater billing and adjustments um, signed off by Trustee Nunaker are presented for authorization.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the water and wastewater adjustments as signed off by Trustee Nunaker.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Okay, and I just have a few budget amendments. I'll just read them off. I'm just requesting the transfer from the increase in the fire contract of $37,000 to the fire capital account. And then I have a few budget amendments that will all be coming from contingency. They are as follows. Central communication, 2,000, street lighting, 5,000, the medical insurance, general fund, 9,000, engineering, 5,000, building fees, non-employees, 3,000, uh, central garage, 2,000. These are not totally over budget, but they are over budget and taking into account what we may, will need in May to pay out of those line items. And then additionally is the 1,200 that I'm requesting go into the streets, fees, non-employees for loading the barriers for the streets, and that total amount from the contingency will be 27,200.
And so what's our balance on our contingency then?
After that, I think there's 30,000 in there now, so after that, it'll be down to about 3.
Okay, and does that cover enough to get through to May if we have anything else?
I, I think so, because I think between the departments, um, we'll be able to move things around within the departments. Uh, we're looking better than we were this time last year as far as any over-budget items.
Okay, and last year, we were well, way over in ho, in highway, which impacted us a lot.
Right.
So we've been able to manage that better this year, so thank you.
Right, and I think I'll talk to Rick and just make sure, you know, that we kind of coordinate what street work he's going to do until the end of this fiscal year.
Right.
So he doesn't go over, but also so he uses it to do what he needs to do.
Correct. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to accept the budget amendments as presented by the treasurer.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving forward.
Okay, so budget 2122, we've already discussed that during the public hearing. Uh, New York State Fiscal Stress Monitoring System, the village has again obtained a no designation for fiscal stress and scored well on the New York State Fiscal Stress Monitoring System with no trends towards fiscal stress. Transfers, as per the adopted 2021 budget, amounts were funded and will be transferred to the capital accounts as follows. The fire was the 40,000 in addition to the 30... The fire was the 40,000 in addition to the 37 that I just asked the board to, to approve in the budget amendment, bringing that to 77,000. The Capitol Streets, 7,500, and the Capitol Police, 10,000. So the, these are budgeted. I don't really need a resolution for it. I'm just notifying the board that I'm going to be transferring them prior to the end of this fiscal year.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Karen. All right, Department Reports. We're going to move on to the Police Report, which I'll read into the record. This is for the month of March. Total number of incidents in the town were 21. Total number of incidents in the village were 76. Total number of tickets in the town, five. Tickets in the village, 61. Arrests were one and accidents were three. Uh, just to note, all officers have completed their eight-hour procedural justice training course, and enrollments are now beginning for the implicit bias training course to be held in May and June by all our officers. Uh, the, our officers did provide extra coverage at the Church of Messiah, uh, for the food pantry during this past month. Uh, detailed reports are available on file to look at the detail of all of these reported instances. Lydia, building, planning, and zoning.
Uh, building, planning, and zoning, we have had a bit of an upheaval with our, um, temporary zoning enforcement officer that was resolved yesterday. Our current temporary zoning enforcement officer went on medical leave, and so we have temporarily replaced her with, um, the zoning enforcement officer from La Grange, um, which is great because, uh, he, the, the, he and Ken can work well together, um, in their day jobs. So, um, we're, I am, I am just deeply hoping to have all of these temporary problems resolved within the next three months. Otherwise, uh, the Buildings, Zoning, and Planning Office brought in $12,644.20 this month. Or last month. Of which, almost 11,000 of that was from building permits. And so, I mean, if these building permits continue with this clip, we're going to be making some serious cash next year, so we'll, we'll, we'll see.
Keep those revenues coming.
We'll see. That's all I have.
No, thank you. I didn't print out the highway. Martina, do you have the highway? Can you read the report?
I sure can.
Trustee Lewitt, meeting has not ended and he's still there, so.
Okay, the highway report. They did a lot of cold patching throughout the village. Some spots were too far gone to use on it, and they need a hot mix. They cleaned the catch basin out on Astro Drive because they have flooding problem. Trimmed back the shrubs at the municipal parking lot for sight distance of the walkways. Tom Johnson filed the village hall. They installed numerous speed signs throughout the north side of the village. Scott Minn, the highway supervisor, met with a Marist College student to install the water measuring device.
Oh, great.
They also met with a Marist College student, um, to organize tree planting out behind the shop along the Landsman Kill. Dave Seacor from the Wastewater Department installed a new entry door into the shop. Carl and Dante set up the voting booths for the election and helped keep the polling station clean during the election, which I really appreciated.
Yeah, they did a great job.
They serviced the two village lawn mowers for the season and purchased a new line trimmer. Did spring cleanup around the village hall, police department, and the municipal parking lot. Disassembled the snow equipment on trucks five and eight so they can be used for brush pickup. Repaired the sidewalk on Mulberry Street. Scott, Trustee Lewitt, and Meg Crawford went through the mini park and assessed which trees and bushes needed to be trimmed and/or removed. They have been utilizing a contractor, Joe Zip, who they've been having work for them about three times a week. Trustee Lewitt and Scott Minn drove around the village to get a plan together for the maintenance schedule for the roads. And that was submitted by Scott Minn, highway supervisor.
Thank you. Do you want to move right into the Water Department Report?
I have that as well. Okay. On the 24th, they drained and cleaned the settling tank number one. On the 25th, they drained and cleaned settling tank number two. On the 26th, there was a power failure for three and a half hours, and on the 28th, there was a power failure for four hours. At the Violet Hill Storage Tank, on the 29th, they snaked drain for the old storage tank. Um, and normal maintenance, mowing, weed whacking, etc., and they performed regular operations in the pump house.
Very good. Uh, there is no wastewater department report, so we will skip that. Vanessa, environmental.
Yeah, so, um, you just heard Scott Minn mention the Marist students, um, were working with him down by the highway garage. We have booked our Trees for Trips planting for May 2nd. And our Marist students are helping to organize volunteers for that. If anyone's interested in helping, it will be a socially-distanced affair, but we can take some, some, um, some volunteers to help plant trees and shrubs along the Landsman Kill behind the highway garage. And you can find out more information about that via, um, a flyer. We'll have that up on Climate Smart Rhinebeck. We also, I did want to make mention that the town is going for their Climate Smart Communities Bronze Certification. Looks like they'll be applying for that in July. So in order to spread the knowledge about what's happening with that project, we are, um, we normally have our, our Climate Smart meetings on the second Wednesday of the month, but we're going to move this to the 21st. And David Chernak, who's leading, leading the town's Climate Smart project, will be presenting. So anyone in the public is free to join that meeting and hear more about what the town is doing. Um, the town is also doing that, uh, CCA solar project. And so, um, I just, again, wanted to reiterate, anyone is free to go to those info sessions, even though village residents are not taking part. Um, and they'll also be speaking about that at our Climate Smart meeting on the 21st of April, if anybody wants to join. I can't remember if last meeting I mentioned, we did our amphibian migration, and it was a, quite a success. We had a lot of volunteers camp, come out. We tracked lots of cute little amphibians. Um, and we were actually featured in the DEC newsletter with a wonderful photo of, um, the Rhinebeck Village Police Department, um, supporting our volunteers out on a rainy, uh, rainy dark night um, as we counted up migrating amphibians. So that was really cool. And I just want to say thanks again to Pete Dunn, um, Officer in Charge for helping to coordinate. Um, and, uh, also, some of our members of Climate Smart Task Force will be helping, um, on the 24th of April for our, uh, village tree planting. So, um, that's coming up as well. I think maybe, I don't know if Rick's going to have time to hop on the call for that. Yeah, that's it for me. Um, if, again, if anybody's interested in what we're doing with Climate Smart, go to climate-smart-rhinebeck.org, sign up for our newsletter. And, um, that's the best way to find out about what we're doing.
Cool. Okay. Thank you. Committee reports, the only thing we had was a tree committee, and I do know we had a resolution for Arbor Day, which I gave back to Martina, and I don't have a copy of because I was assuming Rick was going to be here, so excuse me one second. I'm going to grab it.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to say this is one of the most efficient meetings we've had in quite some time.
Sorry, Wolf and Leah. Okay, so this is Arbor Day. Uh, we do this yearly, and I'd like to pass a res- a resolution to celebrate Arbor Day and I'm not going to read all of it, but in the, you know, Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature and clean air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, where our trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood, for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other products. And where our trees in our village increase property values and enhance economic vitality of our business areas and beautify our community. And whereas, whenever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And therefore, I, now Gary Bassett, Mayor, Village of Rhinebeck, do hereby proclaim April 24th, 2021 as Arbor Day in the Village of Rhinebeck, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees on our woodlands. Further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. I'd like to make a motion for me to approve, uh, recognizing April 24th, 2021 as Arbor Day. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Raise your hand. Okay. Very good. I know we don't have a full board here, but I would like to make a motion to go into a brief executive session to discuss some, attorney-client discussions and also performance of, uh, two of our employees. Do I have a motion to go into an executive session?
Second.
Second.
All right. So, Martina?
Thank you.
All right, we will.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you all. Good work. Thank you, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to end the executive session. Do I have a second? And if you have a show of hands, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I'd like to return to our regular meeting. There was somebody in the guest room. Is there?
Not anymore.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to end our April 13th Village Board Meeting. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Go enjoy, have an evening, and spend some time with your family.
Thanks, Al.
We don't get paid enough. Either that or we're all, or either that or we're all goats.
Yeah. Either that or we're all working too hard.
Well, that was, that was from Mike's book, We're All Goats.
All right, there we go. Yeah.
Tell them I'm reading.
Guys. Oh, good. I will.
Good night, everyone.